So if an immunocompromised person is vaccinated and boosted, what you're saying here is they still are at pretty significant risk of hospitalization or death?
They are because they have not responded quite as well to the vaccines. So it's not that they have no response, but they have a weaker response. And one of the things that prevents most of us from getting sick every year with the flu is that we've been exposed to it so many times. We've had flu over and over and over, we've been exposed to the virus over and over and over, so we've built up some kind of shield. But that's not really the case for immunocompromised people with this virus. It's not true for any of us, right? None of us have ever seen this virus before. And so now some of us have vaccines and boosters, so maybe that's three exposures to what this virus looks like. And so we're in better shape, but we're still getting infected. For immunocompromised people and for older adults, they've been exposed to the flu throughout their lives and they've had some chance to build up immunity. And with this virus, they are completely vulnerable because their immune systems have not yet had enough opportunity to train. If you think about it, it's like they need more training, more exposures to get to the same point that we do. And also their immunity may drop off faster. The coronavirus is also just a more severe virus than flu. So in lots of ways, this is a very different scenario for people who are immunocompromised, for people who are older adults. And I get these heartbreaking emails from people talking about how they are just being left behind, that the pandemic is not over for them, and they are terrified of going out there. And they don't think of themselves as a particularly weak category. They're people who are going to work and doing everything else like we are, but they all of a sudden have to be very worried for their safety in a way they didn't have to be used to.
So, Apurva, stepping back here, I guess what I'm wondering is, when does this pandemic become endemic? And when does it become something like the flu?
So those actually turn out to be very different questions. When does this virus become endemic? If you talk about endemic in the very strictest definition, it's that something is now a permanent part of our lives, and this virus already is that. But the reason we say that we're not quite at the endemic phase and we're still in the pandemic phase is because we are still seeing a lot of surges and we are still seeing that the virus is changing faster than we can adapt to it and faster than we can prepare for it. And none of those things are true for something like the flu, right? The flu also changes, but it mutates to a significant degree only every five years or so. And most of us have experienced the flu multiple times by the time we get to be adults. So we have built up a sort of thick layer of immunity to the flu virus generally. But with this virus, it's new to all of us. And so we haven't had a lot of exposures, we haven't had a lot of time to build up that thick layer. So we are going to see some level of disruption to society with every one of these surges. Hopefully, the surges get smaller and less frequent, and we settle fairly quickly into some sort of seasonal pattern like we are with the flu. Already, we're kind of headed in that direction. But it would be good to get to a place where, like the flu, we know COVID happens in the winter, and we have a vaccine that is really suited to the latest variant of COVID, whatever that is, and that we are somewhat prepared to live with the virus. I don't think we're there yet because this virus is still so unpredictable.
Okay, so the virus is still very unpredictable. We're still not at the end. What does it mean in the medium term for people in the United States and for people in other countries?
That depends very much on who you are. I get a lot of heartbreaking emails from people who are transplant recipients or who are on treatment for cancer or who have other conditions that don't allow them to move on or are very, very much afraid of this virus still. And these are people who go to work with you or who you don't even know have these conditions. There are 5 million of these immunocompromised people, and they feel very much like they're being left behind while the whole world is moving on.
So it sounds like there are these two groups who really can't afford to get sick. One is people without the money to deal with it, and two, immunocompromised people.
Right. And the sad thing about this whole situation is that we've seen this play out over and over. We've seen this with diseases like HIV and TB where everyone was once afraid of the disease, and then because treatments became available, only some number of people had access to them, some number of people could afford them, and then the rest of the world still had to deal with it. And that's where I'm afraid COVID is headed, to a disease that, for one group of people, is not at all a big deal, and for many others, is still catastrophic.
Apurva, thank you.
Thank you.
Apurva Mandevili covers health and science for The New York Times. In Europe, Austria announced it would reintroduce an indoor mask mandate as coronavirus cases continue to rise, bucking a trend among European countries of lifting precautions.
The bottom line is, we likely will see an uptick in cases as we've seen in the European countries, particularly the UK.
Meanwhile, in an interview on ABC's This Week on Sunday, Dr. Anthony Fauci said he expected to see a similar increase in the number of infections here in the United States.
Hopefully, we won't see a surge. I don't think we will. The easiest way to prevent that is to continue to get people vaccinated, and for those who have been vaccinated, to continue to get them boosted.
Fauci's note of caution comes as several states continue to relax restrictions. New Hampshire, Massachusetts, South Carolina, and Utah all plan to close mass COVID testing sites in the coming weeks, shifting testing efforts back to hospitals and pharmacies.
The Daily is supported by Progressive Insurance. Small business protection for more than vehicles, with insurance expertise to keep your company moving forward. More at progressivecommercial.com. And by Angie, dedicated to helping homeowners care for their home, from repair to remodel. Reviews, booking, and more at angie.com or on the Angie app. For everything you need to know about the most important stories of the day, you're listening to The Daily from The New York Times, distributed by American Public Media.
The Daily is powered by the journalism of The New York Times and is distributed by APM, American Public Media. You can go deeper into the stories you hear on The Daily by going to nytimes.com/thedaily. That's it for The Daily. I'm Sabrina Tavareesi. See you tomorrow.
The March 21st, 2022, 7:00 PM School Board, I'm sorry, City Council. City Council session, if everybody called order, and I'll ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord to please call the roll.
Mr. Beszczich?
Here.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Here.
Mayor Lee?
Here, and a quorum is present. I will lead us in an invocation, and following that, I will also lead us into the page of allegiance. Please join me if you will. Let us pray. Et tuad, our Father, we come to you today first and foremost to thank you for this day. Thank you for your many blessings that you've provided us, and we ask you, Lord, to continue to direct and guide our lives. We ask you to help us as elected and appointed officials to do the service of this city. And, Father, we ask you to continue to bless this city. And, Lord, help us to recognize that you are a God that's able to do all things, and we thank you for what you've done and what we know you're going to do. We give you praise, we give you honor, and it is in your son's name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to our second session of today's council meetings. And we've got a pretty light agenda for this evening. We have some informative things that we'll share with you, and I'm sure many, most of you are interested in finding that out. So the first thing we'll do is come out of closed session. I'll ask someone to offer a motion.
I move with respect to any closed meeting just concluded that each member of City Council in attendance certified of the best of his or her knowledge that, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the members of council in attendance.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Beszczich?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And thank you. Let me do this first, I'll come back to you. Council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RV TV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/ronocity. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing impaired. Now, at this time, I'm going to ask the Vice Mayor to share with us the information relative to the school board appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Roanoke City Council has selected the following applicants to be interviewed for the Roanoke City School Board: Mary Appel, Ryan Bell, Kathy Cohen, and Joyce Watkins. The interviews will be held the morning of April 18th, starting at 10:00 AM, 10:30 AM, I'm sorry, and concluding at 12:30 AM. There will be a public hearing to hear views of citizens for these candidates, April 18th at 7:00 PM, and a decision will be made after our closed session on May 2nd at 2:00 PM. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. We will now proceed with our public hearings. Hearing A1 is a request of Franklin Road LLC to close by barricade the alley running north from Franklin Road Southwest towards Luck Avenue Southwest, adjacent to property located at 117 Franklin Road Southwest, and to close by barricades the portion of the alley running parallel to Franklin Road Southwest and Luck Avenue Southwest, continuing east from its intersection with the aforementioned alley to the southeast corner of the building at 120 Luck Avenue Southwest. David, Dave Jones is the agent spokesperson. There's one measure which is an ordinance. Read the ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, could you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance authorizing the alteration, alteration and closing by barricade of certain public right-of-way in the city of Roanoke located at 1, an alley running north from Franklin Road Southwest towards Luck Avenue Southwest, adjacent to property located at 117 Franklin Road Southwest, official tax map number 1012613, and extending north to the southwest corner of 120 Luck Avenue Southwest, official tax map number 1012606, and, two, the portion of the alley running parallel to Franklin Road Southwest and Luck Avenue Southwest continuing east from its intersection with the aforementioned alley to the southeast corner of the building on 120 Luck Avenue Southwest, as more particularly described here and after, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. It must be noted that the City Planning Commission approved this matter on a 6-0 vote. And at this time, is Mr. Jones here?
I don't believe Mr. Jones is here, but as agent of the planning commission, I can answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Well, thank you, sir. And I'm going to open the public hearing. And are there any citizens wishing to be heard on this matter? Madam Clerk?
No, I don't have any citizens signed up for this matter.
All right. I will close the public hearing then and ask my colleagues on council if they have any comments or questions. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, I ask you to call the roll.
Mr. Beszczich?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey? I'm sorry. Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the ordinance passes. Thank you, thank you, sir. Our item B is the hearing of citizens upon public matters. City Council sets this time aside, or sets this time aside as a priority for citizens to be heard. If deemed appropriate, matters will be referred to the city manager for response, a recommendation, or report to the council. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers to sign up?
Yes, sir, we have six speakers.
Six speakers?
Yes.
All right. I will ask you just to call on those speakers, ma'am.
Sure. Our first speaker is Martha Ann Kutcher.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Councils, I presented a letter to Mayor Lee last week from myself and a group of citizens of Roanoke requesting that the city fly the flag of Ukraine at or near City Hall. And with your permission, Mayor, I'd like to read my letter.
What? Yes.
Dear Mayor Lee, as constituents of the city of Roanoke and of the Greater Roanoke Valley, we request that you raise the Ukrainian flag over, sorry, over Roanoke City Hall in a show of solidarity with Ukraine. As you know, Ukrainians in the thousands are dying in the cities and countryside of that beautiful country. This is the death of innocents, women, children, the elderly, soldiers, and members of the international press are being targeted by Russia. The least we can do as a city is to show our support for the bravery of the Ukrainians as they try to repel President Putin's brutal, unprovoked, and irrational war of conquest. As Mayor of Roanoke, you have already condemned the Russian war on Ukraine. We agree with this condemnation, and we are glad that you and the City Council have expressed strong support for Ukraine. However, we believe that this message of support needs to be made demonstrable and visible. We believe that the best way to do this is to hoist the Ukrainian flag alongside the flag of the United States outside City Hall. Many municipalities across the United States have already done so. So, Mayor Lee, please order the Ukrainian flag to be raised over Roanoke City Hall. We are grateful for your support so far, and we hope you will lead the Roanoke Valley in this demonstration of solidarity with Ukraine. Moreover, if possible, we would like to be present the first time the flag is raised so that we can duly commemorate the event. We would appreciate learning when this will take place. Thank you. Sincerely, members of the group called Ukrainians in the Greater Roanoke Valley, and I have 17 signatures on the letter, Mayor Lee.
Well, thank you so much, and I did receive your letter. And let me say, as you alluded to, we as a council and I feel as a city fully support Ukraine and the hideous things that are coming to that country from Russia. And unless my colleagues have any thoughts or comments on that, I'm going to refer the letter to our city manager so that we can discuss and take any appropriate action.
And I did, they actually delivered that to me earlier today, so I have that, so I'll be back in touch with you.
Totally, thank you very much.
And also with the council further.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Beszczich.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just say that I would strongly hope that the city manager will arrange to support Ms. Kutcher's request and suggest that it be raised below the American flag on the pole at Freedom Plaza. This is about people who deserve to maintain their freedom and to have their country. And when we renamed the plaza across the street, we named one side in memory of Henrietta Lox, and we named the other side Freedom Plaza in recognition of all those who have fought over centuries for this country. Our hearts really do go out. When I read what has happened with some of the attacks, it's just, it's, it's hard to believe that in the 21st century, someone can continue to do this sort of thing. So I'm just offering that as a suggestion, Mr. Mayor, but I think that would be a very appropriate place for it to be, to show we want them to have their freedom.
Thank you, Ms. Beszczich. All right, anybody else have any comments on that? All right, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Carroll.
Our next speaker is Ben Early. Oh, he's not here. Okay, our next person will be, speaker will be Rita Wilhelm.
Did you say Lee Wilhelm?
Rita?
Lee.
Rita Wilhelm. Nick Hogan.
Hagan.
Hagan, yes.
Go ahead from this, that's fine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and other members of the City Council. My name is Nick Hagan. Among other things, I'm a property developer and attorney here in Roanoke City. Like many Roanokers, I was deeply troubled to learn of former member Robert Jeffries' convictions on three separate felonies. I believe strongly that any member of government should have the trust of the people, and there is no room for government for people to violate that trust. This type of cronyism has no place in government. As such, fairness in appointment should take precedent. I know Roanoke City has had a history of appointing the person who came in fourth in various elections. In that vein, I call on you, this council, to do that decision, or that, just an equitable decision. This council needs to appoint the person who received the next greatest number of votes from the November 2020 election. That would be Peggy McGuire to serve as a member of City Council until such time as a special election can be held. I think it's necessary to ensure that all the voices of Roanoke City can be heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that is our last speaker.
That's our last speaker.
Yes.
All right, well, we'll close that session. And on that note regarding City Council and what we're going to do, we have a resolution directing our attorney, City Attorney, to petition the Circuit Court to issue an order confirming the remaining members of City Council are authorized to appoint, pardon me?
Mr. Beszczich?
Sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. All right, is that, we do have, right now, this is the order, okay. And I, I will ask our clerk to read the title paragraph of that resolution.
Okay. A resolution directing the city attorney to petition the Circuit Court to issue an order confirming that the remaining members of City Council are authorized to appoint a qualified voter to fill the council seat forfeited by Robert L. Jeffrey Jr. until a special election can be held, and to issue a right of election to order that such special election to be held on November 8th, 2022, to fill the remaining balance of the unexpired term from January 1st, 2023, through and including December 31st, 2024.
All right, there's some political jogging in this resolution, but I'll ask our attorney, Tim Spencer, to explain this process and what's going on with the vacancy that we have on City Council.
Real quickly, with this resolution, if I might, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
What this resolution does is this directs me to file a petition with the court, and that petition will do two basic items. The first is, it will confirm that this council, in accordance with Charter Section Number 4, has authority to appoint an individual to fill the vacancy from the date of appointment until the end of this year, which would be December 31st, 2022. until the end of this year, which would be December 31st, 2022. The second step is, is to ask for a special election at the next general election, which is November 8th, 2022, where an individual will be elected to fill the final two years of the unexpired term for Robert L. Jeffrey Jr. And that individual, if elected, or when elected, will serve a term of two years beginning January 1st, 2023, all the way through December 31st, 2024. So those are the basic two things that this does. Once an order is entered, then the city will go about the process to seek applicants, applicants to the city clerk's office, to be considered by the April 4th council meeting, and the deadline for filing will be April 1st, that Friday, and where council will then consider those applications with the idea that there will be an appointment at the April 18th council meeting. But the first step, Mr. Mayor, is the adoption of this resolution directing me to file that petition with the Circuit Court, and I will, if instructed to do so, I will take that action tomorrow.
Thank you. So I'll call for a motion.
Move the motion. Second.
All right. Any comments, any further comments or questions by members of council? All right, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Beszczich?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the motion is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Spencer. And for people in the media, Mrs. Spencer will be here to answer any questions that you may have at the conclusion of our council session. Along with council members, so we'll do that. All right. Is there any further business to come before council? Hearing none. Therefore, this council meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you.
I can hear the pushback that maybe in the legal field, folks think that those are the best law schools, so why not? Why not pluck your Supreme Court justices from Harvard and Yale? But we can debate that later. But you also said geog-